Are you ready? Call back to order the Board of Supervisors on June 5, 2018 from recess. Supervisor Serna.
Here.
Kennedy.
Here.
Frost.
Here.
Natoli.
Here.
Peters.
Here.
And you have a quorum. Okay, we will now, we're going to work on our budget, our recommended budget and our CIP.
Flo, can you get the old one?
So before you begin your deliberations, Madam Chair, we wanted to just provide you some additional information and report back on a number of items that were sort of identified as outstanding issues during your budget, during the budget presentations from departments this morning. With regard to the Department of Child, Family and Adult Services, the Heart for Kids Program, the Birth and Beyond issue, Funding for Birth and Beyond, and Senior Emergency Housing. And Michelle Caioz will be up to make that presentation, provide you some additional information on those issues. Then from the Department of Health Services, a general discussion of sexually transmitted infections and specifically the increase in incidents. You had wanted to discuss funding for a student health initiative at the community college, but Supervisor Kennedy has taken care of that issue, so Dr. Casiri will be here, up here to discuss that issue. Then Water Resources, Michael Peterson will be up to discuss the request for funding from the Splash Program, and I think we'll chime in on that as well. And then finally, we'll be talking about, in the Fair Housing Budget, the request for additional funding, for a growth request for Sacramento Self-Health Housing, the Sacramento Self-Health, Self-Help Housing Contract, and I'll be addressing that issue.
Actually, Brad, I think we did end up with a suggestion of Commissioner Kennedy, we're putting that to September 2018.
We'll move that to September discussion, I'm sorry, that's correct. And so I'll turn it over to...
I thought that was only acknowledged as an option.
Yeah, and we're talking about $14,000.
I think we should have the discussion.
Oh, I'm sorry, okay.
So I can provide a...
I think my exact words were "at the very least."
Yeah, understood. I remember it that way.
Rewrote it.
I'll provide an overview of that, and then, so I'll turn it over first of all
Good afternoon. So I will start first with the Hearts for Kids Program, and I think Supervisor Natoli, you had asked about that earlier. And I just want to explain the two components of the Hearts for Kids Program that are impacted by the first five reductions. This is another program that was impacted. So the first component is medical clearance exams. So whenever we bring a child into foster care, they go through this specialized medical clearance exam to determine whether there are any medical issues. It's very comprehensive, so it's not just to detect undetected forms of child abuse or neglect, but they also do medical dental screenings, they test for communicable diseases, HIV, other STDs, so it's very comprehensive. The other piece of that then is when issues are identified, they're assigned to public health nurse. The public health nurse then follows that child into foster care, educates the foster parent and the social worker about the medical issues or anything that needs to be followed up on. So that's the home visitation piece by the public health nurse. So with the reduction from first five, both of those components go away.
So, if I could, Madam Chair.
Yeah, sure.
So, then what happens? So you take a child who may be medically fragile, but certainly comes into the system and has no, it sounds like there are still going to be examinations, but it sounds like in this case, no, to determine that. And then secondly, in the event that you determine it or not, you have no nurse then to follow that child, you know, basically to help manage the case from a health standpoint. And these are zero to five, in a lot of cases, these children are not, can't even speak for themselves.
Correct.
So who is their advocate, who is their health advocate, and who sees to it that the social worker and that, you know, the foster family obviously has gone through some bedding and so forth, but that there's a recognition. I trust that this isn't just done, maybe it is done routinely, but it concerns me that you've got children who are already in the system who can't speak for themselves, who now then lose at least the health advocate, at least in part. So help me understand as to how, what happens if it just doesn't happen at all, then...
Right. So what is going away are these specialized medical clearance exams. All children will still have the ability to get an exam, a regular physical health exam through the CHDP program, and that is supposed to occur within 30 days. So our social workers work with the foster parents on ensuring that the kids get that follow-up. So it's still a physical exam, but it isn't the comprehensive exam to detect for child abuse and neglect and other conditions. And we do have a number of children in foster care who have medical issues, and we have a number of public health nurses assigned. So they would still be able to do the ongoing casework, it would be that they wouldn't be starting at the beginning and working with the foster parent on it.
Michelle, let me ask you then, and maybe this is a better way to frame the question. So being that we've been doing this for several years now under the Hearts for Kids Program, and how many incidents or situations have you actually determined? What you wouldn't have known if you hadn't done the exam, that you then have had sexual abuse or some other child abuse that then has led us to do an investigation and probably take, you know, a more serious course of action than just removing the child from the home? So is it a very low incidence, or is it, give me a percentage or a number?
Right, so it's about 33 kids a month that get a screening, and in about 70% of the cases, there is some type of medical issue identified, which is then where we assign the public health nurse for follow-up.
What percentage?
About 70%. Yeah, so it is not insignificant. So with the CHDP exam, some of those issues would still be identified, and then our social workers will follow up, get, make a referral for a public health nurse to also come along. And so it's just further down the road versus at the beginning.
So on average, it's 20 children a month who are in the initial screening and this medical exam that are determined then to have some sort of situation that would warrant further medical attention and/or intervention by CPS workers and so forth. That's 240 kids a year.
Right.
That's a lot of kids that are at risk, that may be discovered further down the line, but again, these aren't, you know, six to 10-year-olds that can speak for themselves, and maybe by four or five, maybe they can tell. But when you've got, you know, infants and toddlers, I'm concerned that if we're, you know, you're going to leave a lot to be desired here, and is it total, $366,000? Is there a way to zero in on this, to do something that would provide for a screening that, again, recognizing that the money's going away, but it seems to me there's some necessity behind this. I guess, you know, you've worked in that area for a long time, Michelle. I mean, this is kind of the front-line intervention and examination, if I'm not mistaken. It's like, I don't want to say it wrong, is that correct?
Yeah, it's medical clearance exams that are currently provided by Sutter, and it's a child abuse expert that does, that conducts the exam and oversees them.
And again, and not to be any less serious if you told me it was 10%, but when you tell me it's 70%, that's a pretty high number. I think it's, for me, it's a cause for considering, trying to find something, some other way to address this. That's a lot of, you know, if that was my child, or your child, or somebody else's audience, and this child that was at risk, that's, you know, that's one too many, but when I'm talking about 20 a month potentially, and some of those may be caught, I get, you qualified that, that's a pretty big exposure for folks that are very, very vulnerable and fragile. So I guess, Madam Chair, I just, to me, this just needs to be looked at. I don't know if there's some other way to address it, to maybe get to bring the cost down to some degree, but I'm not, you know, I don't want to be saying to 240 kids potentially annually that you're, you know, you're on your own.
How much money is it? So the total cost of the program is 690,252. We get a federal reimbursement of about 258,000, so the total cost is 366,607. That's for the older children? That is for the medical clearance exams, as well as the 2.0 full-time equivalent of public health nurses. So it covers two public health nurses, we have a senior office assistant who's been doing the data collection, and then we have a family service worker who transports the kids to the actual clearance exams, and then back to the foster home. Mr. Serna?
Thank you. So I just want to make sure I understand a couple things. If it were not for the Hearts for Kids Program, are you saying that this population, they would not have access to the medical screening for both sexual abuse and physical abuse?
So prior to the recession, the department was funding these, and this was one of the many programs that had to be reduced. And first five came forward and picked up these medical clearance exams as part of the Hearts for Kids component. And so just as they did with the Family Resource Centers for the birth-to-five population, so that's how we were able to preserve the clearance exams. They stopped for a little bit.
Let me be clear, per the CEO's recommendation, it's his recommended budget, would this population forego screening?
Again, they would go through the typical physical exam through the, through their primary care provider. So it's not specialized, but they would get a health exam, a clearance.
Does that mean they don't get sexual abuse exams? And what, what, what don't they, what do they miss?
So there's a complete head to toe, I can read what they get if you...
Is it fair to say that they're going to have a much limited screening?
Yes, it's not as comprehensive as the medical clearance exams.
And is it fair to say that if we don't have that comprehensive screening, that it's possible, perhaps probable, that it becomes a cost center later for the, for the county, based on the fact that perhaps some of these kids get missed? And there's later issues with, I don't know, foster care, or other ancillary welfare issues associated with their adolescence? I mean, depending on their age, of course, when they're, they would have been screened, but is it fair to kind of assume that there is some future cost, all other things being equal?
So if we assume that not all conditions will be caught at the CHDP exam, through their primary care physician, then there is the possibility that some medical issues will go unaddressed early on, and perhaps get more severe down the road. Again, we do have access to public health nurses once the kids are in foster care to assign, we've got a medically fragile team of social workers, but it would be further down the road.
Okay, thank you.
Madam Chair, if I could just, so what would it cost? If you didn't have the follow-up visitation, that's where I started with the question, my questioning, but certainly the frontline exam is where you can ferret out whether it's problems or not. And these kids, you know, you may be a little harsh about, they're victims, you know, they're victims of whatever the circumstances are, if nothing else, but if 70% of them may have been victims of something else, that's key and critical. And so I guess what I'd like to know, if you get some reimbursables here, but to at least get those, those kids, when they come into the system, they get that exam, those zero to five. Again, I've said it twice, but they can't voice for themselves, you know, up to probably age two or three anyway, and then it's going to be very limited.
Right.
So it's going to be up to, and if you get that later exam, some of those indicators that might be of a physical nature might not appear. When you do this exam, when they come into the, you're getting, this exam is done fairly quickly, if I recall correctly, and it seems to me that, you know, when we were doing, you know, just hacking away at the budget in the Great Recession, that was one thing, but now we have the ability to look at this, and maybe we, you know, you give up part of this, which the visitation's not unimportant by any means, I asked about that initially, but what would it cost to do the medical exams roughly?
So I did break that out at one point, and I would be guessing, but it's like 125,000? 100,000? 100,000 plus we would be able to leverage another 100,000, but that would cover the actual medical clearance exams without the follow-up visits by the public health nurse.
But if you determine something, then they're plugged in anyway, right?
Correct.
And so, I mean, so you'd be about 30%, may not get the follow-ups, others would get the follow-up, there's something, determination made that there's been some level of abuse.
Correct.
Okay, 100,000.
Any other questions on, oh, I'm sorry, Ms. Frost?
So I want to make sure I understand, you said that there was a medical exam available by their private physician, it's not as extensive, could it, could there be a way to request that certain points, data points are, you know, addressed in that medical appointment? And then my next question is, are you telling us that sometimes it's those follow-up appointments that actually help us better understand the situation for that individual?
So I'll speak first to the follow-up appointments. The follow-up appointments are about ensuring the child gets the necessary medical follow-up, as well as assisting the foster parents, helping the foster parents know this is the issue, this is how you can attend to it while this child is placed with you. And then these are the follow-up appointments that you need to ensure happen, and then they follow up to make sure that has happened. With respect to whether a typical physical exam can be expanded, it's kind of outside of my scope, I would probably ask for Dr. Casiri's input as to what the CHDP exam covers, but I know it's reimbursable, so I don't know if it's limited to certain aspects.
Is there a way to get a sufficient medical exam but still provide that follow-up? I think that follow-up is really important, it sounds like to me.
Right, so I think as Supervisor Natoli said, once it's identified and they're in our care, we can link to a public health nurse. So we've got public health nurses that are already working within the foster care population, these ones are assigned upfront. And so they would still get assigned at some point, just not initially upfront, where they can interface with the resource parent in the way they're able to now.
So I guess the question is, is there a break in the, you know, is it, if you have a private physician or their own physician do that medical, does that, is there a break in the continuity of care or the quality of care for them?
Good afternoon, Supervisors. Dr. Casiri, Public Health Officer. In answer to your question, the CHDP exam is geared towards preventive services. It's the one that we give for any child that comes up who not necessarily has the background of child abuse. The difference is that the clearance exam is done by people who are specially trained to look for certain things. It's not something where you can say, "I want you to go and look for 1, 2, 3, 4." They go through specialized training, so if we do not have the contract, that will be lost.
Could I just, excuse me, just asking while you're there, Dr. Casiri, so I assume in addition to, you know, identifying any issues the child would have, it also provides some level of assurance to the foster family, because, again, those children in a lot of cases can't speak for themselves, but if they were to go through... can't speak for themselves. But if they were to go through, and then there was some identified issue after they'd been placed...
That is correct.
We know there's been accusations made against folks, you know, saying, well, that didn't happen in my home. It happened because the county placed this in this foster family's care, and we didn't determine that. So, is that, we weren't at risk?
That is correct. And that was, is the value of having the home visitation nurse, is that they would then take the information that they get from the clearance exam. They would be able to work with the foster family to help them to understand what needs to happen. And then, sometimes also, they have to coordinate the care. For example, if there are issues that are complicated, that require a specialist, sometimes it's difficult for the foster family to navigate and figure out where the child needs to go. So, the public health nurse helps with that piece. The public health nurse also helps with a warm handoff once the child is placed, to be able to continue the care with the foster family, and also with the primary care provider.
No one else?
I don't understand why, why we can be reimbursed for private, their private physician, and yet, we cannot be reimbursed for that same. I'm not sure I totally understand. You're saying that they could seek that same service from their own physician and be reimbursed?
So, the CHDP exam is a special program for, that is for Medi-Cal, and that's where the reimbursement comes from. The specialized exam is not covered as a part of that. As I mentioned, CHDP is preventive services. So, that part of it is not covered. It would be a specialist part.
Okay. Thank you.
Madam Chair.
Mr. Natoli?
Yeah, just why Dr. Casiri and Michelle are both there. So, if you can walk this back, we've had, didn't we put this in place in the late 90s, when we had some of the severe cases? And so, we've been doing this for, you know, 20 years, roughly. And by virtue of this budget, we would eliminate this. I mean, if I recall, this goes back to some of the cases that resulted in death, and certainly, review of our entire system about how we're going to do intakes into the Child Protective Services system. And it seemed to me that rather than just on a budget item, that then, because first five can't fund any longer, making the choices we make, that we come to the conclusion that somehow this can be no longer, and I'm not saying you're doing it, but I guess I would speak to Nav and Britton, others about this, too. This is, and maybe we need to go back and look at some of those reports, and the tremendous community venting that came about because of kids that were in the system, that either didn't get in, or that got neglected. And that part of this was part of that whole, again, Michelle, you've been here for a long time, and Dr. Casiri, you're here off and on, different times. Is that correct? Is that accurate, that we instituted this as an outgrowth of that?
That is correct, yes.
So, probably 20 years ago, roughly? 1997, 96, 97, 98?
Roughly, yeah.
Okay. So, I, again, now, I guess I want to peel, as one member of this board, I don't, you know, again, this has a budgetary component to me, but this seems to me, this is a safeguard for youngsters that are in our care, because of severe circumstances in their family. And if 70% of them are showing some level of abuse, I don't see how we cannot do this and do the appropriate follow-up. So, that's my view on this one. Thanks.
Okay. Birth and Beyond?
So, I think Mr. Wagstaff, you know, stated that the gap is 650,000. And if it's the board's decision to fund that bridge, then we would figure that piece out.
Mr. Stern?
Thank you. So, I think as Supervisor Natoli just concluded, and I agree, I agree with his conclusion, that as Hearts for Kids is, funds very well-spent to take care of one of the most, one of the most essential needs that are presented before this board and this county. As I've stated before, I've seen the efficacy of Birth and Beyond for a number of years now, for at least two terms at least. We've seen the expansion of our FRCs. We've seen the enhancement of the programming through Birth and Beyond. I think the data is pretty clear in terms of what Birth and Beyond presents, not just certain parts of the county, but the entire county, through our network of FRCs, in terms of the benefit for certainly reducing future exposure of kids and families to, quite frankly, unnecessary aspects of the judicial system, and also, as it relates to our continuum of care for public health. So, I'm very interested in, and I'm looking at the CEO at this point, very interested in having our staff figure out where the $650,000 would come. Again, it's not, in my understanding, that's not for an entire fiscal year. That would be for a portion of it.
I'd have to hear.
To get us to a place where we're all working together, the Birth and Beyond providers, our appropriate departmental staff, to have us compete effectively, as Mr. Wagstaff mentioned earlier, and then reassess at that point. But I think leaving, even for a month, this to guesswork, in terms of where that funding might come from, and what does that mean for the future of the programming? Does that mean less robust programming? Does it mean that it might even result in the closure, or, you know, dysfunction of certain FRCs? That's not, that's not a place I want to be in. I'm not necessarily saying that that would happen. I don't think anyone is. But if we, I don't think, if we fully, if we do not fully fund this, at least for the time being, I think we really have a huge unknown, and it's on the backs of the kids and the families that benefit so, so much from Birth and Beyond. So, I'd like to suggest that we give that direction to our CEO and to our CFO, that we find that, that funding.
Mr. Kennedy?
Eke, I just wanted to turn on my microphone. Echo what Supervisor Stern said, you know, as Phil's alternate on first five, you know, I've had, been privy to the data that shows categorically that, that the Family Resource Centers are saving us money. They're, the data shows clearly that they're cutting down on recidivism when it comes to CPS cases. And I think it's something that, for, you know, not just the financial respects, but the right thing to do. Also, you know, admittedly, the district that I represent is ground zero for a lot of their services, and needed, and shutting those doors, even for a short period of time, would have, in some ways, tragic consequences.
I'd like to comment on it. I think it's a good program, and it does show results. But I'm wondering whether we could, I thought I heard him saying, I could be incorrect, that there was a possibility that the state was going to fund this. So, is that correct?
Supervisor, if I may, what we talked about, I'm sorry, Bruce Wagstaff, Deputy County Executive, there is the real possibility that in this legislative discussion, now wrapping up over the budget, that there will be home visiting funds under the CalWorks program, that the Birth and Beyond folks could compete for, and that we are going to actually be submitting application for, to the state, and in the hopes of getting a sizable amount there. Overall, statewide, it's about 26 million. And so, we think we, given our, our track record and everything else, that we're going to compete actively for that. And then, of course, we would put that out. But it is a fast track, at least as these things normally go, that we should know what our amounts are by the fall, like around September-ish. And then, with the idea that the money's out there for service provision, provision around 1st of January. So, it's coming. It looks like it's coming.
I'd like to see us wait, you know, at least till we find out what the state funding is, before we, I mean, God knows, I don't want to step in and spend money that the state is supposed to be paying us in advance. They're supposed to be carrying us, not vice-versa. So, like I said, I think it's a good program, but I think we have to wait until we find out if the money's coming through from the state.
I just think, if I could, I, I respect that, understand it. I made that suggestion with the same understanding, that there would be, hopefully, there would be some state assistance, more so than there is now. We're not in the business of spending taxpayer dollars for the sake of just spending it. We want to be effective. We want to certainly maximize the ability to use state and federal funding anytime we can, to preserve our general fund and to minimize net county cost. I think that's something all five of us can agree on generally as a principle. My concern is that waiting does leave us a certain amount of time where we're, I think, personally, I think we're putting too much at risk, even if it's a short amount of time measured in months. And I don't think that's a prudent thing to do, because I do agree with Supervisor Peters. It's an extremely good program. It's way too effective. It preserves way too much potential cost down the line for the county. So, I'd like us to have uninterrupted Birth and Beyond service, at least the status quo, which is my understanding. If we did provide the 650,000 between now and likely January, is my understanding, that that's what it would, that's what it would preserve.
Well, what if we go take a little bit of both of your mind and your thoughts, where we have the staff look into where the money could come from, and then, if we get in a tight, if they get in a tight spot, that then, we know where the money could come from? I mean, I just, I just don't want to spend $650,000 that the state could spend.
No, no. And I, believe me, I want the state to spend the 650 versus our general fund spending the 650. As long as there's some guarantee that there's not going to be an interruption or diminution of service, in that, in that time in between. And in fact, that was the direction I thought I was giving, or at least I was suggesting, I should say, that we set our staff free to figure out where that's, you know, come from, if that's the will of the board.
Couple of other people have comments here. Mr. Natoli?
Yeah, thank you, Madam Chair. Well, it was my understanding, and I think we talked earlier this morning, and Richard dropped the word "bridge," but the thought about the bridge funding was, is to fund it for the next two quarters, first two quarters of the next fiscal year, with the understanding that not only from the standpoint, it would look good at the state, the opportunity for that money to be available sometime in the late part of the calendar year, and then with the opportunity for the federal dollars, that they would then, certainly, the FRCs and our various partners would have a chance to, one, to make any adjustments they had to make, but also, you know, in all likelihood, it wouldn't result in closure of any of the locations. It might, you know, have to make some adjustments in services. But that this would provide the ability for them, as providers and our partners in this community, to seek out that state funding that looks like it will be available, and then the federal opportunity as well. But that couldn't be in place in the, you know, over the course of the summer months, or even by early fall, in all reality. And so, it would take some partnering. But their shortfall, basically, is a million and two, shortfall in the sense, that's a total reduction. This would cover half a year, and would allow them to bridge it, although it would be funding that would not be a loan, as it was made clear earlier. So, you know, I would be supportive of making that allocation. I guess, at a minimum, you could allocate the funding through September, and then, if there's more that's known. But I, but I think that we have heard pretty clearly, and maybe staff are aware of this, that even with legislative action, that that money wouldn't flow to the various partners prior to late fall, early winter, at soonest. And so, there would still be some potential gap. So, I don't know. Yeah, but you're kind of looking like you want to respond to what I said.
My suggestion is that...
I'm sorry. I'm sorry. Ms. Frost?
Well, that was this, what I heard in public comment was that they would have to wind down, and then they would have to ramp back up, which is much more costly than just keeping them going. And that's kind of what I think Don was saying.
Suggestion I was going to make is that in the next couple of months, we will know for certainty if the state money is available. As Bruce said, we do have a check-in with you in September to see where we are. If the 650,000 is half a year, we could do it three months, and see in September where we are. If we need to extend another three months, we could do it at that point, based on where the state is and the competitive process. So, that's in...
Okay. Deal.
I think that's, I think that's a fair, fair way to check in.
Sure. And then, take the other 300,000, put it towards the Hearts for Kids program. We've really got a deal, so.
Might we not play poker with you?
Senior emergency housing?
Yeah. So, our recommendation with respect to this item is to wait till final budget in September. Again, there is a Home Safe program that is currently in the budget, proposed budget, and it's highly likely that that will pass. And so, that could be some potential revenue for the senior housing. And then additionally, there could be some community block grant funding that we can use to help with the bricks and mortar aspect of it. So, we would just need a little more time to delve into it.
Okay. Ms. Frost?
Is that housing for homeless, or are there income qualifications on that housing?
The state program?
Yeah.
It's, you know, I would need to kick it to Cindy Kavanaugh, but it's specifically for seniors, Home Safe, to provide the emergency housing, because it's lacking throughout the state.
Yeah.
Supervisor...
It's hard, it's tough, because there's not enough. There's a lot of seniors who make more than that minimum amount. I wish there was a way we could find some federal funding for some of these seniors.
Well, Supervisor, what Michelle's referring to is language that's in both the Assembly and the Senate version of the state budget they're now negotiating. They have funding specifically designated for Home Safe. And from what we've seen from the discussions on this funding, it appears to us, we could use it for the purpose that the board is talking about, safe housing for seniors, emergency housing for seniors. And what Michelle is suggesting is that we sort out how this ultimately is decided upon by the legislature, as well as explore the CDBG funding. And we think we can come back to you in September with a proposal for how we could do this.
Is there a way to go back and revisit those income qualifying structures with the state and the Fed, to just say, in California, housing is more expensive? Can we, can we revisit those calculations?
We can look into that, Supervisor.
I think it would be good, because our housing is more expensive here, and our seniors are living on the edge.
Supervisor Frost, absolutely, we'll look at it. But I do not want to give you any false hope that there's going to be any movement on the federal, because they, that's a criteria that they kind of guard very closely.
They're always, they've been low all my finance life. It's, we're always behind in California.
We'll talk to them about it, but I'm not going to...
But every now and then, they make an adjustment. Thank you.
I think the next one is Sandy Damiano, or is it Dr. Casiri? Dr. Casiri is next.
Good afternoon again. Dr. Casiri, Public Health Officer. So, I was asked to speak a little bit about sexually transmitted infections. A few years ago, I did give a more extensive PowerPoint presentation. And at that time, there was a lot of questions about why the rates were high in Sacramento. At that time, we ranked fifth for the three sexually transmitted diseases that we monitor. And so, I gave an extensive presentation at that time. So, this time, it's not going to be as extensive. But I did want to give you an update. You've heard in the news recently, California put out a news report that the rates are increasing in the state as a whole, and in many of the counties. In Sacramento County, the rates have increased as well. But the little piece of good news that we have is that as opposed to ranking in the top five for the top three diseases, now we are eighth for chlamydia, sixth for gonorrhea, and 11th for syphilis. The meaning of that is that even though the... is that even though the rates are increasing, they're not increasing at the same rate as the state or some of the other counties. So that tells us that the strategies that we are implementing are working, but our work is still cut out for us. We're not done yet. In Sacramento, what the approach that we have taken is to work collaboratively with our partners. So we started a collaborative, and it includes the medical community, community-based agencies, schools, and the colleges as well, representatives from the colleges. And the strategies are many, including screening, offering screening in as many places as we can, getting treatment for those who are comeback positive. And this board actually approved the ability for us to continue to provide bisonin for some of our healthcare providers, because it's not easy to get. But being able to have it readily available when someone is diagnosed with syphilis helps us in making sure that people get treated on a timely basis, and that we don't get people lost to follow-up. We also have a team of disease investigators who continue to do surveillance. So when we get a positive result, they make sure that they find out that that person was appropriately treated, and also look for the contacts and make sure that the contacts are evaluated as well. Because of the volume of positives that we get, our focus has been on syphilis, one, because of the volume, and also because syphilis is the one that, where we're seeing the highest increases. And especially most worrisome is with the women of childbearing age because of the concern...
I'm sorry, could I interrupt a second? Mr. County Executive, we've already approved the funding for this, so I'm not sure why we're hearing it.
I think there's a broader question. Supervisor Nattoli want to know what was our strategy around STDs. So that's what Dr. Casiri is giving.
I'm almost done. So, of course, with congenital syphilis, because of the effect that that would have on children. And as was mentioned earlier, also, this year, we did get positive results among college age, which we hadn't had before. So these are things that we're concerned about and working on. Total budget is about $8 million. About 90% of that actually goes out into the community, and most of it actually comes from federal and state grants. That's it.
Good, then, just very quickly. So what is our match requirement in order to draw down those federal dollars?
We do, we're not required to have a match. We just have to apply. But when we get the funding, most of it comes with specifications as to what we need to do with it. And most of the time, they tell us that we do need to contract out. For example, with Ryan White, we have only two staff people, and most of the money goes out in the community to provide services.
Okay, thanks.
Thank you.
Okay, before we go on to the next one, the page doesn't look all the way up, but is the district attorney's request on here somewhere?
Not, those are the follow-ups that you asked us to do. The DA conversation is among board members.
It's what?
It's among board members. These items is what you had asked us to come back and report back to you. So we can discuss the DA item when we get through the list.
Okay.
The next item is that we got a request from Splash, and as a reminder to the board, last year, this issue was in front of the board about if we needed an educational program, and the board gave us direction at that point that we were to, that there was not an interest in it. This year, the question that's come up for us, and I have Michael Peterson available to answer this question, is the funding that was freed up from not having that contract, what have we been doing with that money, how we used it, and what are the future needs for that funding that we have? So if Michael Peterson can come address that issue.
Good afternoon, Michael Peterson, Department of Water Resources. The, the funding that we're speaking of is from the stormwater utility, and it's used to fund, in part, our administration of the stormwater quality program for the county. That includes preparing annual reports on effectiveness of stormwater prevention, pollution prevention methods, report, you know, preparing an annual stormwater quality report submitted to the regional board. There's monitoring throughout the year to determine, to measure stormwater quality. It's training staff and carrying out stormwater quality regulations. It's a number, you know, one of the new aspects that we're working on in compliance with our stormwater permit is developing a plan to address and mitigate trash that gets into the storm drain systems down to as small as six millimeters. That's a new requirement. So the funding that, that we've historically used to fund Splash, which we do still fund Splash, it's called Splash in the class, it's a different aspect of the program, is used within that stormwater quality budget.
Yeah, thanks, Michael. But so I guess, but last, last year, years previous, we'd had $115,000, give or take, maybe some more than that in the year prior. So that was not by board action, dedicated to Splash, so remained in the budget. So you're doing a plan? Is that, I mean, all the things you described, with the exception of the plan, were things you did, maybe did more or less of, but...
Correct.
As a part of stormwater monitoring, and obviously as regulations come down, you have to adjust to that. You do staff training. And so the money that would have potentially gone to Splash is, what, spread out over all those things now, or you actually focused in on a plan? Because obviously, we had a new stormwater permit. It didn't have the requirement that the Splash component previously, it at least did the emphasis for that, was no longer added for the permit. So, what, you devoted that $115,000 to begin to develop a plan?
Well, that $150,000 specifically is not earmarked for anything. That becomes part of the fund balance that we, that we used to develop the 1819 budget. So yes, it's, it's within that. We didn't change the title of a line item or anything like that in the budget. So rather than, than having this Splash Vernal Pool program be funded, we've utilized, you could say, that freed up revenue to help support the 1819 budget, which is, again, to go to all those, you know, those programs.
Which has been absorbed into all those program activities, basically. Okay. I guess, again, and this request came to all of us, so obviously, I expressed the interest in this last year, is that I think they've gone off and done some other things on a fundraising element effort, and some of the other funders, obviously, are, just as we did, looking at their, you know, long-term commitments. But this, they were asking for a one, not unlike what they asked for last year, to try to bridge some of those over. I think they've obviously demonstrated the ability to raise some additional funds for what I think is a pretty solid program, and I don't think there's a disagreement about that. It's about disagreement about where to fund it. So if we didn't, didn't fund it out of water resources, per se, then I guess that we'd entertain a request as a general fund request. And so, you know, it's kind of...
Supervisor Nattoli, that would be one option. But actually, as your board knows, you've established the $1 million TOT Community Grant Program. This is exactly the sort of request. It's a one-time request. It fits exactly into the profile of the sorts of things that were, I think, anticipated being considered as part of that grant program. That process, as you know, starting yesterday, has just kicked off, the process of soliciting proposals. And our suggestion would be, to the extent that the Splash organization wants to seek funding from the county, as opposed to the school districts or wherever else might be the appropriate funders of this program, that would be the appropriate venue to look, to, to, to identify funding from the county, for the potential funding for the county for this program.
I'll just answer, certainly, one, one source. We obviously have the ability to honor the request if we choose to, too, as well. So, okay, thanks.
Okay. Thank you.
The final item we have is a Fair Housing Service, and we'll discuss it now and at least in September, too, right?
Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the board. So just a brief background. The county does have a Fair Housing Services budget. The 1819 budget is $168,000. That includes funding for certain legacy costs associated with the old Fair Housing Agency program that was operated. In addition, it includes a contract with Sacramento Housing to provide the hotline, the call line in for complaints and issues regarding fair housing. That contract in 1718 was approximately $130,000, and the amount for, in the 1819 budget is also approximately $130,000. Basically, it continues funding for that contract at the existing level. The total amount of that contract for services, because we're not the only funder, cities fund that as well, is about $299,000. Again, our share of the cost is $130,000. As you know, the housing organization has asked for a increase, a growth request. Our share of that cost would be $14,000. The total increase is about $13,000. And they've asked for that increase, as was indicated, to basically add additional staff and support, to provide additional outreach to religious community and other grassroots organizations, and really to try and aggressively reach into the community to address issues of fair housing. Our general approach this year was to really limit growth recommendations, to really target to very critical needs. And while it's not a large amount of money, we didn't feel that, given all the needs that were going unmet in CPS and other areas, that we could recommend an additional funding for this program. But the amount that's requested is 14,000, basically $14,900 is the additional growth request that they've, that they've made.
Any questions about this? Comments?
Can't we find that in the sofa?
Yes.
Is that an acronym that I haven't heard before?
So those are the questions that the board had. Then the other one, as Supervisor Peters mentioned, is that the DA had some requests that wanted the board to consider. So those are the items. Back to you on that.
Okay, so, are the requests were for two positions, for IT analysts, and then $21,000 for a class change on vehicle?
So on the position, I believe Supervisor Peters, that I think Nancy Newton, our Assistant County Exec in the DA's office, is going to work that issue out.
Okay.
That's my understanding from this morning.
And on the vehicle, my understanding was that they want, they want the SUV class. We have to authorize that vehicle.
Well, he was just talking about the first one, the IT positions.
Right.
So that's, that's done. That's off the table?
That, I believe that is.
I believe it is, or it is?
Just work Nancy and with the DA's office. If it's not, we'll, let's not put a negative. I think it will be fixed.
So on the AV specialist, I didn't really get whether we're looking at two positions? Is that we're looking at two positions?
My understanding, and I'm looking at Steve Grippy to give some more background, but it is two positions, and the cost is how much?
Forty-three.
Yeah. Steve, is that, he's nodding his head, yes.
Okay.
It's two positions.
If you're going to speak, you need to come down here, Steve.
It's two positions.
Okay, two positions. We're good.
Just to add one part to that. It's two positions. We already have it. We're using temporary employees, so we can absorb it in our budget. We just need...
So no money, just two positions?
Yes. Thank you.
That all seems pretty reasonable to me.
And it was similar on the vehicle, was that if you authorized the different class vehicles, they could absorb it. Emery didn't say that in so many words, but, right? They were looking at authorization.
That's what I understand.
Further comments on that?
Go with it.
And we're good with that?
Okay, it's fine.
Okay. Was there anything else that we needed to cover on the budget? Okay. All right, then, are we ready to approve the budget?
If.
With those changes? And just as a reminder, I need to make the first motion.
Right.
Flo is going to get the slides up, so...
It's our annual...
What?
I just want one clarification. On birth and beyond, clear direction, $325,000. Hartz for Kids is $366,607. Is the board interested in funding that? Does that, is that part of the budget motion?
On the birth and beyond, they understand is $325,000 to get us to final budget in September. We have a, we have a look back, a look forward. If it's determined at that point, the context of the suggestion is, is that we would consider another $325 to get us to...
December.
To the end of December.
And then on the Hartz for Kids, I just, to me, that's, I think we have a obligation, responsibility to do that for those kids.
I agree with that.
So it'll be $366,000. Again, the amount, because there's a, it's actually more than that, because you get some matching amounts, so it's a $500 and something thousand.
Right, that's just the net count.
The $360, yeah, yeah. You can fund that for an annual.
Okay. So I would move that the board adopt the budget, but exclude the budget items due to my possible conflict of interest related to Mather. And I'd move to adopt the budget minus exclusion identified in the two slides shown by Metro Cable.
Second.
Any further questions?
So, in doing that, I just want to be clear, because it's, we...
Splash will have...
Right, it'd be a separate motion, I get that. So, but it includes the...
The changes, right?
The changes, okay, that's right. Okay, all right.
Sorry for clarifying, I thought that was clear.
Got it, okay. All right, so includes the changes, all right.
Any other comments? Okay, please vote.
Second.
Okay, can I ask, in that motion, you moved the balance?
With the changes.
I got to offer a friendly amendment to include the Splash program, the request for $97,500.
He's making, he'd like to add the Splash budget.
The Splash request, to fund it.
I know, I didn't hear it.
Oh, oh, yeah, yeah, the Splash request for, their request was a one-year bridge funding for $97,500, so. Well, that was what staff suggested. I, again, nobody asked a second motion, but I still believe we ought to fund it, so.
I'd support that.
If I could just throw one caution in that this will be a competitive process with the $97,000. It's for whatever the scope of service that we have. It's an RFP that I believe, I'm looking in the back to make sure I'm correct on that. Because it's not a sole source, there could be other folks that have it.
But historically, it's, it's been an RFP, kind of with one respondent?
I believe so, that's...
Yeah.
That's fine.
We'll have to go over that, we'll go through that process.
So we're not really budgeting it? I guess we're just place holder for the service.
Right, right.
For a service, if I can't remember the exact words, for kids and education program, the RFP will be developed with that scope of service. Anybody can bid on it, and if it's Splash, entity A, B, whoever can come in and have access to that, those funds.
I have, I'd like to ask a question.
Ms. Frost?
Is, is it, in prior meetings, we were told that was not a service that we needed, and so that's why it was eliminated. So can we establish that we need it at this time, to add that program at this time?
I think Supervisor Frost, I think staff recommendation is that we do not need it, but when the program was needed, that it's, we don't need it at this point. But if the board wants to continue providing that kind of service, it's at the board's discretion that you can...
So what happens then? You go out for RFP for, for that service?
That would be correct. It'd be a one-year service, and if whoever wins it next year, that funding will go away, unless the board wants to re-apply again.
A little cumbersome, but works.
Couple of the things that in that, whoever ends up getting it, I think the full discussion is that there are programs at the school systems, and there's other folks that they can have access to funding. Our funding would, the word we've been using today a lot is Bridge, if that's what the board wants, but it's strictly for 12, 12 months.
I'm, I'm a little concerned that it sets a precedent, that we do something at the last minute that we don't necessarily need. I mean, I'm not sure I can support it.
That precedent's way out the barn.
Yeah, why break with tradition now? Yeah, why break with tradition now?
Because we do it often. I can't vote, so I'm...
Oh, okay. That, that's right. So, Supervisor Kennedy, thank you.
Well, I'm talking about the Splash, so...
Right, right. So, I'm talking about Splash, too.
Yeah, okay.
So, here, I mean, I, I can support this, but I'll say the same thing I said to Splash. I mean, yes, it's a great program. There's no question about it. I mean, my, my own kids told me, it's the best field trip they ever went on. My wife had her kids there for her class recently. I mean, it's a great program. But Mike and you, my, my words to Splash was, it's an educational program. And as a former school board member, I can tell you that, you know, they need to go more aggressively, reach out. I think that they've gotten, and all due respect, they've gotten lazy at coming to us because we've done it in the past. They need to be more aggressive in not only just private fundraising, but go after the educational institutions, whose role it is to do this. You know, in order to keep the doors open, Supervisor Natoli, I, I will support you. But they, they can't just continue to look at the county to do something that's not a traditional county activity, so. But I'll support you.
Okay.
All right, please vote.
Are, what do we do?
We're voting for the balance plus the Splash RFP, not, not necessarily Splash, but the RFP for the services.
All my, all my Mather items and Splash.
Right.
Can I just go on record as, you know, not supporting Splash, but...
Voting for the balance.
Let's not say Splash, let's say the service.
It's not, yeah, because it's not about Splash. I, I think Splash is a great program, too. I just don't think at the last minute, it's appropriate to spend taxpayer dollars that way.
Yes, sir.
On the motion, then, does that include the sofa money for the Sacramento self-help housing in the motion? Do you want to make sure that gets included?
I think we were going to come back to that, weren't we?
Yeah.
Yeah. We'll come back.
Unless you want to do it now, I'm ready to do it now.
Are we voting?
No. Okay, the motion is...
Get this Mather stuff cleared up, so I can get back in the conversation.
Okay. Let's take the Splash issue separately, and then Supervisor Peters can...
I'm still out of that one.
Huh?
I'm still out of that one.
Right, that's what I'm saying. We'll take that separately. So, we'll take that, the remainder, but the question was on the self-help housing. Let's do that separately, so that Supervisor Peters can be involved with that conversation. Okay. Please vote.
Please.
So, what do we, do we vote on the budget?
We're voting on the remainder, plus the Mather activities, not naming Splash. And then we will hear the Sacramento self-help housing afterwards.
And your objection is registered on Splash?
Right.
Or Splash, like services?
Service. Hello?
The motion carries with Supervisor Peters recusing. And it is noted that Supervisor Frost does reject the portion related to the RFP for the services, for Splash.
Self-help housing.
Okay, self-help housing, so...
Yep.
Is there a motion?
I, I'm prepared to move the $14,900, draw $20,000 in additional match. Housing's critical. They're a partner along with a lot of our agencies, so I move the item.
Second.
Please vote.
Unanimous vote?
Right, budget's done.
All right. So, now do we take up the other stuff today, take consent?
We're going to do the capital improvement plan first.
Okay.
Is everybody ready for that?
I move CIP.
Okay, I would, I would move to adopt the CIP, but exclude the projects that are on the slide.
Let me make sure they have that...
Due to potential conflict of interest, what?
Let me make sure they have it ready. Okay.
There it is.
Second.
Okay, we have a second. Please vote.
Unanimous vote?
Second.
Please vote.
And the motion carries with Supervisor Peters recusing.
Okay. So, now we're going to consideration of consent matters. I believe that's where we are in the agenda. And as the county executive, I think what we're going to do is just discuss item four, and then items three and five will go until tomorrow, right?
No, you...
Are you going to do all three of these?
You can do all three.
Okay. Well, then, let's do three and five and come back to four.
Okay. I move either three and, and five.
That was a move, that was a motion?
Yes.
Second.
And the motion carries with Supervisor Peters recusing.
Okay. So, Madam Clerk, do you want to read item four, please?
Authorization to execute an amendment to the agreement with the United States Department of Homeland Security, Immigration and Customs Enforcement for the detainment and care of federal detainees at the Rio Consumers Correctional Center?
Does the board want to have further discussion? Oops, I see Mr. Stern is up, sorry.
Thank you. So, first of all, I want to express my thanks to the immigrant rights advocates that came here and were very patient and spoke eloquently, I think, made some very, very good points, very persuasive points today in their opposition to a continuance or an extension, I should say, of the ICE contract at the RCCC. You know, this is, this is reminiscent of a slogan that is too often used, especially this, this time every four years, which is, but it's still an important message, and that is that our, our budgets are reflective of our values. And for me, understanding the context, not, not only understanding the context of the, the contract, what it means fiscally for the county, but certainly set against the backdrop of ever-increasing, an ever-increasing intensity of kind of a hyper-politicalization of the immigration issue and this county's involvement relative to the, the contract. And then on top of that, educating myself, as I did last year, joining Supervisor Natoli with a visit to RCCC specifically to see the conditions and the, the setting of the ICE detention holds. I just cannot find it in myself to continue to support the contract. And what really kind of bothers me is, you know, the board letter uses the verb housed quite liberally. We're not housing these people, we're jailing these people. And we're jailing these people when some of them don't have any criminal violations. It's, that's the way it's stated in our board letter. So, to have us consider extending a contract that while it has some fiscal benefit to the, to the county, but results in what I think is a quite clear moral abomination, is that I don't want to be party to jailing people when they have no criminal violations. It's just, it's about that simple. And so, I'm going to move and look for support from my colleagues that we not extend the ICE contract.
Second.
Mr. Kennedy?
And I really don't have, you know, a lot more to say than what Phil said. You know, I just, I, I thought long and hard about this, because it's a hole in the budget, I understand that. But I think we're chasing dollars at the risk of being morally bankrupt. And I just don't think that it is within the values of this country, certainly not this county, to continue to participate in what I see as very, very flawed federal policies. So, that's why I seconded the motion.
Okay, Mr. Natoli?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I would just say that I intend to support the motion to not renew the contract. And I want to just say briefly that I, too, have given a lot of thought to this. Certainly, we had a chance to hear from folks today, but we've received materials from both the sheriff, as well as from other interested parties. And certainly, I know that from the standpoint of Mr. Ferguson and those that have prepared the budget, obviously, this will leave a hole. But I think it goes far deeper than that, that we make choices. We make choices in our budget decisions. And you can, one can assume or assign value determinations to, to those decisions. But I, I think that the choice we have here is not about so much as even terminating, as it's just to not renew the contract. And we will still have a contract with the US Marshal relative to other beds for those that are criminally charged or being held on criminal charges. These are administrative detainees. And I think the civil process that's available to, to them, and certainly to those that are charged with enforcing immigration policy, we, as a county, can make a choice whether we want to have our facilities as old. And, and I know they were described today in some pretty harsh terms, and, and maybe some of that is accurate, or I trust some of it is accurate. We actually have a CIP we just approved that will, you know, documents a lot of needed improvements at RCCC. But I think, for me, it goes to the point of making a choice, a budget choice, but also, I think, a choice about how we want to utilize county facilities. And in this case, I think that it's, it should be the choice of this board and certainly of this county to choose either to house folks who are being held in detention or not. And my choice is to not renew this contract. And obviously, they'll be, under the current setting, will be housed elsewhere. But, and I think that may have some hardships assigned to it, as the sheriff pointed out. But at this point in time, I intend to support the motion to not renew this contract.
Ms. Frost?
Well, I, too, have given this a lot of thought. From a policy standpoint, whether or not we renew this ICE contract, it is not going to impact whether or not the federal immigration laws, or whether or not ICE enforces those laws. So, from a policy standpoint, it makes no difference. From a financial standpoint, whether or not we approve the contract, we, ICE officers will still be in our county. They will still be apprehending illegal immigrants in some way, form, in, by way of raids or arrests within the community, possibly impacting more people than would have been impacted had they not done it at the jail, in a, you know, quietly at the jail. And when they do apprehend them, if they do not, from a humanitarian standpoint, if they do not have the ability to bring them to our facility, it's quite possible that they will go to a facility further away where their family can't support them as easily, go visit, have visitation. So, from a humanitarian standpoint, in my mind, it seems more, it seems better to have them closer to their families and to not have those kind of upsets within our community. I do support the ICE contract, but the reality is whether or not we do an ICE contract or not, it's not going to change federal policy and whether or not it's enforced. I don't, I, I support the contract as submitted by the staff, so I guess I do not support the motion, respectfully do not support the motion.
Okay, thank you. I, too, will not support the motion. I, I've talked to the sheriff at length about this, and, and the humanitarian aspect of it, I think, is really important. There's some disagreement about how many people actually visit people in jail, but the idea of them being sent several states away, these are very often poor families that cannot make a trip, and they need to be able to talk about what's going to happen to the family. And the sheriff does not arrest them. It's ICE that arrests them and wants them in there. And that, between that and the budget situation, I will not support the motion. Please vote.
And the motion carries with Supervisor Peters and Frost voting no.
Right, remains right. Wrong remains wrong.
Matt, we're still in, we're still having a meeting here. Yeah, thank you. Are there any other items to come before the board?
I do not have any other items.
Supervisor Peters, just as agenda management for tomorrow, there's only two items and a closed session that you have. You have an item at 9:30 for in-home support services. Also, the Rio Consumers Correctional Center, this is the item continuing from May 22nd to have a discussion about the kitchen being removed. And rest of the items, you took care of today. And so, it's up to the board what time, if you want to start at 9:30, what time you want to start. Fairly quick items, closed session will take...
I'm going to suggest 11, that we start at 11, and then do closed session.
I like that idea.
What?
I like that idea.
Okay. So, we'll recess today's meeting and come back tomorrow at 11:00 AM.
If I'm not here, you'll know why.
You're practicing. Meeting's adjourned.